I'd like to call the order, the Buckswood Town Council Meeting for Thursday, July 14th, 2016. Road call, please, Susan.
Joe York.
Here.
David Key.
Here.
Paul Rabbs.
Here.
David Keen.
Here.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Paul Govan.
Here.
Robert Carmichael.
Item three is presentation of any town council recognitions. I don't believe we have any tonight. Item four, considered minutes of previous meetings. I don't believe we have any either. We approved a bunch last meeting. Item five, receive and review correspondence and documents. First one being Down East Transportation, June ridership. Susan?
This is the information from Down East Transportation as to what the shuttle and the taxi that are, the town participates in were for the month of June.
Any questions from the council? Okay, we'll go on to item B. Is Central Main Power easement for McDonald Street?
I was contacted by Central Main Power. They had a pole that was having leaning issues and needed reinforcement, but it was adjacent to a playground area, recreational area, and they couldn't put the wire into, a support into that area. And so they changed the pole location and for the support. Our Public Works Director took a look at this and determined that it's not, it doesn't bother right away or whatever, and it's a safe location. And so it's on here just for your information that this is, that pole has been changed in order to accommodate the fact that it was falling over and couldn't be supported properly.
Dwayne, it looks like there's two stakes there. Are they going to put two poles in?
No, it's a pole and an outrider.
Okay.
They will be re-studying because of the varsity baseball field and retaining walls. They'll set the new pole uphill with the guy wire down. The second stake you see is the guy water anchor.
That pole is leaning high because of the transformer on it. It's out in right field or the baseball field.
Can I say something about that?
Yes.
I haven't signed the paperwork yet because I've got to find somebody to stamp it. Central Main came to me, they're not paperwork.
Ma'am, could you come up?
No.
Yeah.
Central Main sent me the paperwork, but I've got to find somebody to stamp it.
Noted.
I've not notarized them, but I have a clue where one is.
The town office is full of them.
Well, let's try and see. I'll go down on the bus and do it.
Okay, yes. I'm not, but...
Because she's adjacent property only, she has to sign off on it?
I've had it for a couple of weeks, but I didn't know where to go with it.
Have you ever signed it yet? Find it?
No, it says that has to be signed. You didn't have somebody.
If you wear it in front of me, I'll notarize that.
I don't know where you want it.
I'll wear it either.
Oh, okay.
I'll do it boy lead.
I don't have it with me.
Okay, so this is just notification.
Okay. We're going to go on to item six is public hearings. I don't believe we have any tonight. Item seven is new ordinances to be considered or introduced. Did anything come out of any of the committee meetings tonight?
We have a finance committee meeting tonight. A couple of things I think does resolve on, actually on one of them. The first one was the, let me get back my notes from the Forester. The Forest Management Wood Harvesting Proposal from Jake Meyer. He's a forester. He had some information of a conservation committee that was back in 2011 that initially looked at this. Those of us on the committee weren't here then, so we didn't have a whole lot to go by. But we, I gave the information to Susan. I'm going to have her email him. He's going to send it to all the council members. They can take a look at it, and he's in no hurry. But it's some good information to look at. Maybe something we want to have these folks do to maybe work on some of the lands in town, whether cleaning them up or doing things like that they've done in the past. So Susan will send them an email, and he'll send the information digitally to all of us.
Thank you.
And the other one we had was L Street property request. The piece of property behind the Public Safety Building. We're going to make a resolve to put that in the next meeting to act on that.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Okay. Item eight, discussion items, manages clarification or direction or council discussions, input on issues. First one being bid results for wheel loader lease. Susan?
Our Public Works Director is here this evening. The town received seven, eight bids for the wheel loader. The, it was bid out for a five-year lease, which flattens our payments out of our equipment reserve fund, so that you're not hitting it with all $83,940 in the first year. It's spread over that five-year period, but still gives you the trade-in at the end towards the next one, so that you can maintain that. These are the bid results. The resolve with the Public Works Director's recommendation is further down in the agenda, but their recommendation is to go with Borregard Equipment for a Case 521F with the resulting monthly lease payment of $15,017.87.
Did we have a loader that we traded in?
Yes.
And that's reflected in this lease price?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on that from the council?
Is it necessary to trade in now, or is it just part of the capital improvement program, or is that?
This was, our normal process, the normal process for all equipment purchases has been to trade in the vehicle, the piece of equipment that we're replacing. So as part of the lease, we asked for a trade-in value. The lease price was a result of a trade-in and the resulting end cost. So what you're seeing at $15,017 is their cost minus the trade-in. And then extended that out to five years. So eliminating, we don't need two-wheeler, two-wheeled loaders.
Right.
So we, and as Susan, our manager Lassard said, we don't keep the equipment around if we don't need it. And so you reduce your price by the value that you, your cost by the value of the trade-in.
Yeah, the question is, do we need to replace the loader now, I guess?
Yes. This is a, this machine is a 2003, and has, at the point where if we keep it any longer, we will be suffering the consequences of failure. And we'll be paying to repair it. It is programmed out at a 10-year replacement. So we are now beyond the 10-year replacement. We plan a replacement of every piece of equipment based on a, on a schedule. We've already exceeded the schedule by holding off last year.
Is the way that we can look into that, see if maybe some of that stuff can be extended?
We look at them every time we set up a new piece of equipment. If we buy a new piece of equipment, example, backhoe. We originally had backhoes at 10-year replacement. They were breaking down before that, so we dropped it to eight-year. And we live with the eight-year barely. So we examine every piece before we set a replacement schedule for it. You have a chance to look at a five-year replacement plan, and there is that every time you set up your capital improvement program, you get a product that shows when we plan to replace it, the year it was bought. And as far as I know, the council has accepted it every year on the replacement schedule, except for last year, when we, because of extenuating circumstances, move stuff to the future.
I guess my concern is that we still, we still do have a few circumstances that, I mean, we're not, we're not what we were before, yet, as far as the town. So I'm just wondering if...
Well, your workload has not changed within the town, my department. I still have to support everything that happened before the mill closed. I have not been reduced in my work requirements of any means or manner. I still have Main Street to clear up for snow. I still have all the product that I have to support. If you're going to decide to eliminate the equipment purchases, then you need to decide what workload I won't be doing.
I don't know if anybody considers concern at all, at all.
We're never going to be where we were before.
Yeah.
Right, that said, then we need to look at what was pending.
The lease, the lease is an excellent idea. I don't know where that came from, but that's fantastic.
You are over 10,000 hours on this machine.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to go on to item B, which is bid results for the plow truck. Susan?
The town also put out a bid request for a snowplow dump truck. It received bids from four vendors. Two of the vendors had multiple options. Freightliner of Maine and Daigle and Houghton with Daigle and Houghton had five options. Freightliner had four. Bangor Truck and Trailer won, and New England Kenworth. I apologize, and I've sent out an update to the media and the council that when I did the resolve, I had listed Daigle and Houghton as the, I put the right price and the wrong name. The right price is associated with the Freightliner of Maine, option four for 2017, Freightliner 108 SD with the attendant equipment providing by, provided by Viking Sivs. And our Public Works Directors here for any additional questions you have on this. This again was another one. My recommendation is that similar to, since, since when, plow trucks are not lease objects, they can be financed differently, which is to, I'm recommending a three-year financing of this vehicle. Again, that flattens our payments on it, leaves a considerable amount of money in our reserves and for budgetary purposes is, has less change of impact in your mill rate now or into the future. And the prior question that was asked on where the lease idea came from, that came from the committee that looked at how...
The ad hoc group.
The ad hoc group had made some recommendations into leasing when possible as means of flattening out the cost.
I have a question. Is this the same truck you tried buying last year?
This is a replacement for the same truck that we tried last year.
Right.
What we are doing is we are replacing a 2003 with this truck, but the 2003 will not disappear. The 2003 will go into spare status. What we traded in was a 1999 International. That was our only wheeler spare. So we will not get rid of the 2003 that you put a body on. That truck won't go disappearing until the next wheeler is replaced, which will be a couple of years from now. So you will get any worse from two to five more years of use of this 2003 with the new body as a spare. So what the actual truck that's disappearing from my itinerary is a 1999 International.
Originally, we had planned on back-to-back years of buying wheelers, right? And we opted to put a body on...
Correct.
On the older one.
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to go on to item C. French Property on Route 46, Code Enforcement Officers Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff Hammond, Code Officer. You may recall at the last meeting, this issue was brought to you for your consideration of how to resolve it. There was an outstanding violation notice that had not been met. In 2014 was when that violation notice was issued. 2015, nearly the entire year, I attempted to work with the property owner to resolve the issue, but was not able to do that. However, in early 2016, I learned that some work had been done. So I went out and looked at the property and took several photos, but there was still a considerable mess there that had not been cleaned up. So that's when I decided to bring this matter to your attention. What you asked the property owner to do is to take additional 30 days to make an effort to finish cleaning up the property. And that 30-day period expired on the 9th of this month. On the 11th, I went out. My apologies to Councilor Key, who expressed interest to go along. I tried to contact you, wasn't able to do that, so I ended up going on my own. I took some photos that I'd like to show you if I can. This is the property. First, I want to show you the picture that initiated the violation notice back in 2014. So there's a considerable pile of household garbage and discarded furniture and other items there, as well as some junk items through here. And there was more to them than you could see in that photo. So this is a before and after picture of my visit in, earlier this year, in May. This area here had been fairly well cleaned up. There's still some discarded furniture here that had nothing disposed of. On the 11th, when I went up there, this is what I saw here. Everything had been removed. And I showed this picture to you also at the last meeting of this little pile of discarded items here. That's what it looks like now. There is a collection of debris that had been pushed over the bank a little bit, a mixture of various items here. It's kind of a dark picture, but most, most of that has been cleaned up. There was a little bit left when I was there on the 11th, but Mr. French ensured me that the remaining materials would be disposed of. I have a before picture, but not an after picture. This is a collection of metal that's been sorted out of the pile. I don't have an after picture because vegetation obscured that area, so, but that is removed. And this is how most of, not all of that was taken out. It was a 50-year roll-off container there. You can see it is brimming with material. That's how I think of the property. So my position at this point is that the violation has been effectively removed. And how you wish to proceed with the property, now is your decision.
Thank you. Item D is update on progress of sale of...
The French is here. And the only thing that remains is, is now that the land use violation has been corrected, I had left a message for you to call me about the tax issue, so that we can correct that, because the foreclosure exists. Now that that violation has been corrected, you'll be allowed to redeem your property. So you just need to contact me about the taxes, okay?
Yeah, I'll do something for the town, isn't it? Okay. So we don't have to take any more votes or action on this, right?
No, that's it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item D being update on progress of sale of 14 Buck Street. Mr. Hammond, do you have anything on that?
Mr. Chandler here. I see him. You may recall that this was another item brought to your attention, because the nuisance conditions at 14 Buck Street had dilapidated building that had boarded up at my order. It was brought to your attention because it's another longstanding violation that was not being resolved effectively through that process. At that time, you were, you were made aware that the current owner was in the process, or agreed to sell the property to Wayne Hanscom, who owns a construction business in town here. And he was present at the meeting, Mr. Hanscom was, and confirmed that he was purchasing the property. I contacted him earlier this week to see how things were moving along, because you also asked for an update after 30 days. He informed me that the owner, Tom Parker, was in the process of preparing the paperwork for the sale, but he had not heard from him for a couple of weeks. So he was going to contact him and then let me know what was going on. I've not heard from Mr. Hanscom. I thought he would be here tonight. He said he was going to be here. He might show up a little bit later, but that's the update on that property right now. There has been no sale yet, but my understanding is still in the works.
What was the last time that the town had actually corresponded with Mr. Parker about the infraction or that the town was going to take legal action?
He was given notice...
A month ago?
Of my intention to come to the council to ask for authorization to go to court. And that's when he informed me that he was, his solution was to sell the property to Mr. Hanscom.
At that time, was he given the date of July 14th that we would act on it, or was that, we hadn't decided on that at that time?
This was, this was back in your last meeting, June 9th meeting?
Right.
So Mr. Parker was made aware that the matter would be taken up at that meeting. Is that what you're asking?
No. Did, does he know that it was taken up at that meeting? Did we correspond with him after that meeting saying that something had to be done by July 4th, or we would take enforcement action?
I didn't, I didn't specifically notify him of that. I assumed that Mr. Hanscom would be making that clear to him, that things need to move along fairly quickly.
Has anything been done to the property in the meantime?
Well, I did ask Mr. Hanscom, because there was one opening in the back that still provided access into the building through the basement, that Mr. Hanscom actually said at the last meeting he'd take care of. So I asked him if he had done that. When I spoke with him earlier this week, and he said he had not done it yet, he would be certain to do it. And I haven't been back since that phone call to make certain that has been done. He injured his hand, I guess apparently he was having difficulties, but he thought he would be able to do that.
Now, one more thing, Jeff. I know that you contacted Kyle Workit at one time to do some work on, I remember we did some steps on the back or something. I think you, are you able to do something like that again, or was it, was it Mr. Parker that asked us to take care of that?
It was Mr. Parker. I did not take that action. Mr. Parker's the one who contacted Kyle. It was, it was an issue of securing the building.
It was, yeah. And we had taken care of it at that moment, but I just didn't know if, who, if you'd be able to do that again somehow, or how that, how would you feel about doing that? If it's necessary for the town to, to take action on it that way, or not?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to pay the property a visit tomorrow morning to see if in fact that the one last opening has been secured. And if not, I'll let Mr. Parker know he needs to get that done pronto.
Okay.
What I'm concerned with is that, you know, you've been dealing with this gentleman for a year or more anyway, that I'm aware of, and...
Longer than that, yeah.
That's what I figured. But I wasn't exact, I know it was at least a year. And it's every time he says, well, I'm going to do something within 30 days. Well, you know, it sounds like, oh, he's going to do something in 30 days. Now, the guy who was a potential buyer hasn't heard from him in a couple of weeks. I don't think we should let up the pressure on this gentleman, because it is a safety issue for the community. So I don't know if we should be sending him something if we don't hear from the buyer within another week or 10 days, send Mr. Parker a notice saying that we are getting ready to take legal action. I don't know. What do you think about that, Susan? I just know this guy has been a delay tactics on doing things.
Well, certainly you have the right to authorize your code officer to go to court. It's an expensive, court's never cheap, and it doesn't always make people move faster, but it involves legal fees, which are not necessarily in our best interest. But the, I guess the real question right now is whether or not this sale to Mr. Hanscom is going to happen or not. And in determining that, you would then know if court's going to be your only answer. Because I, Mr. Hanscom has done some very good work in other areas in this community, and I think certainly has the capacity to do so in this area if he gets the building. It may not be in a 15-minute timeframe, but it would be in a timeframe that would reduce the concern over safety and those kind of things. But, and perhaps it's as simple as that the council's action is to notify the owner that, that failure to, to do whatever, it will result in court by X date period.
Have we heard from the, the owner that he plans to sell to Mr. Hanscom, or we just heard from Mr. Hanscom?
I heard directly from Mr. Parker.
You did, okay.
And, and they've agreed on a selling price.
This property is not occupied, right?
That's correct.
The violations that make it unsafe, are they like a big project, or is it, would it?
I drove by, it looks like a pretty big project.
It is. It's a huge building. The interior is completely destroyed. It needs a lot of work done inside and outside as well, too. It's going to be a considerable investment to make the property habitable again.
And the taxes are up to date?
I don't know for sure.
It's not in foreclosure. I know that.
I mean, I would be willing to, you know, maybe give it another, maybe two weeks for the paperwork to finally get going on it. And if not, within two weeks, or Mr. Hanscom doesn't hear from him within two weeks, I would like to see the town send Mr. Parker a letter requesting more information on what his intent is. Do we have to take action on that, or?
Well, I think the code officer has the...
The right to do that.
The right to do that.
I understand what you're asking. I'll head in that direction, certainly.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other comments?
I think that's a fair idea.
Okay, we'll go to item E, outside water meter use.
Some time ago, the sewer committee met and talked about whether or not the town should allow residents or businesses to install an outside water meter for the purpose of determining if they're large outside water users, such as a business, like a hotel with a lot of, a motel with a lot of landscaping, or the school who waters football fields and those kind of things, that right now, there's, there's no allowance in our system. People pay sewer based on water use alone, and there's no provision otherwise. The committee was in favor of allowing that to be explored as a topic. And I spoke with Dave Michaud from Main Water, who manages our treatment and collection system. And his only concern is that our minimums of 1,800 and 2,100 cubic feet for usage, that if someone were to install an outside meter, that those, any credit that came back wouldn't be available until after they'd met those minimums. And realistically, 85% of our customer base doesn't meet those minimums. And so the, the number of individuals who would benefit from this are small. But for those that would benefit, it's significant in terms of, such as the school, the watering of football fields, or a business that's doing a lot of outside. And so the, but the sewer committee had recommended that the council allow this. And so this is on the agenda. There's a resolve that is associated with this. But the passage of the resolve would also require the establishment of some protocols and how this would work in that, in applying, because what I would hate to see people do is get an outside water meter, assuming that it's going to create a credit, when they've never in their life have used anywhere near the minimum and won't, because they're not changing usage patterns. So we would have to have a process to go along with it, but our committee had recommended that we move forward with this as a, as a, an add-on to our sewer... that we move forward with this as a, as a, an add-on to our sewer to allow those who, for whom this is a burden, because the water's not going into our treatment system. It's outside. So, there's a resolve at the end of the agenda, but that, I was just explaining sort of where we got here and how we-
Item K, okay. All right.
Why?
Any questions about this proposal? Yes, sir.
Doesn't affect me, but if, I know there's a lot of squawk about the amount of money people are paying on their water and sewer. If we're not meeting minimums, is there a, maybe a process we can go through to maybe reduce the minimums for these people, to cut down on their, their costs or is that set by the Main Water?
The, at the end of the day, we need X amount of money to fund the sewer treatment and collection system that's paid for by users. And if you reduce the minimum, you increase the rate, but there, there's a pot of money necessary and the, the council has looked several times at whose ox you gore in terms of, you know, of doing that. And that's, the rates went up a year ago this, this month dramatically, and we've given it a year to see how things settle and, and usage patterns haven't changed. Things are, are still saying pretty much that way, but the, the discussion of is twenty-one hundred cubic feet for people who are not metered fair, if it's eighteen hundred for people who are metered? Those discussions are ongoing in terms of looking at rates, but overall, the pot of money that's needed is, what's needed. Mr. Morrison?
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there a period of time that this is going to take place or-
Excuse me, would you go up to the front there so that people could hear this?
Smile for the camera.
This is it. Is there a period of time that this minimum is going to take place or is there something that's just going to continue on through the rest of forever?
There's always been a minimum.
Excuse me?
There's always been a minimum cubic foot that people were billed for, I believe.
Okay, well, the reason that you have to keep that in place and it has to be that certain amount is because we have this debt to take care of that's paying for the, the building of the system. Now, is there a period of time that this debt is going to be gone and the people may get a reduction in their low limit that they can go by or?
The seven point eight million dollars that the town has incurred debt for, for this has either a twenty-five or thirty-year payback at four hundred and thirteen thousand and, and change annually. So, the need for this level of funding is pretty much standard, other than the additional costs of manpower and equipment on top of debt service for twenty-five to thirty years.
Okay. Is it, my understanding that the way we can potentially reduce rates is to have more users?
More people, more users, more stuff, more stuff to bill.
The more we grow the town.
We lost a, a large percentage when the mill stopped contributing. It was, the mill was paying forty-five or fifty thousand dollars a quarter on your sewer bills, and that's gone in essence. It's down to less than five thousand dollars a quarter now. So, if that site is redeveloped and there is-
The capacity's there, it's just-
There's capacity, but the, but the current cost spread over the current user base is a, with the addition of that debt services, which is what this year's budget and last year's budget added a half year each, so in the first year, you have enough to pay your first year of debt service that, that's going to be-
Jim, to your question, I, I mean, other than the twenty-five year term, it seems, it sounds to me like if, if we were to get a major user potentially, that could-
Oh, that could affect rates, yeah.
-lower the rates in a shorter term.
Well, at, at the outset, if everybody had ponied up from a thousand or so people that are involved in this, the use of the, if they'd have just ponied up eight thousand dollars a piece, you'd have your eight million dollars and, you know, it would have been, in the long run, in, in the long term, it would have been taken care of. It would have been a short-term solution to the, the amount of money that was necessary.
Let me say by name, Mr. Morrison. Let me say two things. One is that with the new streaming, some of the conversations in the back are picked up according to some of the citizenry I've talked to. So, if you want to talk about something, you might be well advised to step outside because if the citizenry just gets part of your comment, they may misinterpret something. So, each time, I know it's a pain in the neck, but each time that you speak so that the citizenry can hear all of it, you must come up to the mic first off. And secondly, I, I, I'm not quite following what you said. I don't think it's quite that simple, but if you could up, come up and say that again so we can listen to it and everybody can hear it. You understand about how, how your resolution as to how it might have been fixed?
I don't know.
Okay.
It is very unfortunate with, with the sewer billing, and we've discussed this before, is that we lost our 301H waiver in a federal lawsuit. There was like only a handful of communities in the whole country that had these waivers because of where we were located on the estuary, and there was a lawsuit brought against federal government saying you can't give those waivers. So, that's why we had to put secondary treatment plan in. We could have done it thirty years ago, but the federal government said, "Oh, you don't need it." It would have been a lot cheaper. And then, on top of it, losing twenty-five percent of the flow into the plant being paid for by the mill, it's like a double whammy. That's really why the cost of running the sewers is so much higher. And hopefully with more users, we get it back down to where it should be. Also, there, part of that was the fact that our rates were so low that in order to qualify for the grant, which was almost eight million, the rates had to be up, I think around four hundred dollars a year or something like that, and we were below that, or eight hundred a year. I'm not sure of the exact number, so there was a whole bunch of stuff that kind of went into this that, you know, the council didn't have a lot of control over. But we're trying to deal with it the best we can. I, I believe Susan made a ransom figures and we should be able to at least hold the sewer billing flat for the next four or five years. And in that time, hopefully redevelopment takes place and we'll start to see a reduction in that. Am I somewhat correct?
You're correct.
Okay, we're going to go on to our agenda items. First one being to approve resolve R. two thousand sixteen dash eighty-one, to approve the purchase of a stationary air compressor for the highway department from Ramstow Auto Supply for a price of forty-nine ninety-nine, to be funded from the town garage reserve. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council?
I know we talked a little bit about looking at different options or whatnot. I'm assuming that we decided to stay with this compressor for another reason, so I don't know if we went in any more to that or, or not. I do apologize about that. That's what-
For the type of compressor necessary at the garage that was, bids were solicited from, this was the, the lowest bid price submitted for, our, our public works directors here can explain more about the, the, the physical type of machine that it is, but it is the, our current one, I believe, has been in service since nineteen ninety-nine. It's an essential piece of equipment at the garage and it's, it's not similar to one that, that is, you can-
This is a central air compressor. It's a hundred and twenty gallon capacity air compressor. It typically drives a one-inch impact wrench, which by itself weighs over fifty pounds. We use it to remove truck tires. There's ten lug nuts on every truck tire. If you can purchase a, the existing air compressor was a piston-driven air compressor. This is a state-of-the-art screw compressor, which has by itself a forty percent energy efficiency over a piston-driven one of the same size. It requires two hundred and twenty volts at thirty-six amps usage, so this is not your home compressor. This requires a one-inch hose coming over to the gun. If you can imagine an impact wrench that the tube to the sockets is this big, it is this long and weighs over fifty pounds, you have to have not just the pressure, which is over a hundred and ten pounds, but a continuous flow of air or the gun will not work. This is how we change our truck tires. It also is used to lift the trucks in that it drives a sixty-ton or sixty thousand pound jack, which can lift up a fully loaded wheeler axle. So, we're not talking, go down to Harbor Freight and buy your two-gallon pancake air compressor. This price is one-half of the two other options that we had. It will save you energy and it will do the product for another twenty years.
I believe the screw we have compressors are-
Are the new state-of-the-art.
And they last a lot longer than the piston type.
Correct. It has a faster recovery time. Everything about it is higher efficiency than the one we currently have, which is failing. It will get replaced or you will not have any tires being taken off of trucks when they're flat. It also changes all your cutting edges during the snowstorms. It is the, what drives all of our pneumatic equipment.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, and I believe we've asked for public input and council, council input. All those in favor? Yes, sir.
If I may, this is as good a point as any to bring this up, that nobody's more in favor of citizen input, especially involving expenditures, as I am. We all know that we, we need to be very careful with what we buy, but in coming to this conclusion, and I was the one that tabled, that made the motion to table this, give us a little more time to look at it again, there's a process that we go through when we come up with these numbers, starting with the department heads. And all of that information, what we're buying, how much it costs, what it will do, is available to the public before we have a council meeting. So, what I'm encouraging the public to do, rather than just, and I understand the concern, that's a lot of money, but rather than just coming up and saying, "Well, you know, I want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples," that we know what, what's being purchased, what, what the purpose of it is, that we know what it's made of, that we have more information, and I'm asking the citizens to do a little bit of investigating on their own, since this information is available, rather than just coming up and saying, "Well, that's a lot of money and I can get one for one-tenth of the price," because that just delays the process. I don't think any of our department heads are trying to come up, when something new comes up, they immediately rush out and buy it. I think they do a very good job, especially the roads department, and so if you're going to not challenge that, but bring new information, do your investigation, bring the new information, and you may be right, but you can't be talking about apples and refrigerators. So, I appreciate it if you prepare a little bit and come up with your information and then we can make an informed decision. Thank you.
Okay, we do, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Okay, item B, to approve resolve R. two thousand sixteen dash ninety-one, to approve pay requisition eleven for the sewer treatment plant project, the amount of six hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-three cents, to be funded from the seven point eight million dollar temporary financing loan. Do you have anything on this, Susan?
This is our most recent pay requisition. I, I attended the construction meeting this past Wednesday. Project is still on track, on time, doing well. They have some concrete pours coming up that they may be starting earlier in the morning than people might, there's no prohibition against that, but there are several coming up that may start around five AM. We have one change order that has, has come up that may be necessary, and that's in relationship to the SCADA system that, that communicates with the pump stations from this system. There's a new one in, in the system, but the ones in the pump station are, are not able to talk well now and will talk more poorly than, so it, there is a request to use approximately twenty-five thousand dollars from the contingency to update, to update the SCADA system communication software. That's where that is at this point.
Okay, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Okay, we're going to go on to item C and D. This is basically to discuss municipal solid waste. What I'd like to do is to give different parties an opportunity to speak. We would like to restrict that to five minutes to each speaker. So, we'll start with, we'll go again by alphabetical order, so the MRC will go first and Knob Scott Energy Recovery Corporation will go second. So, anybody who would like to speak on behalf of the MRC proposal and five are right, please stand, come up and introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Karen Fassell. I serve on the MRC Board of Directors. I'm also the Finance Director for the City of Brewer, and I thank you for allowing me to address you tonight. I'll be brief, since I know you have already heard a lot about all the options in front of you tonight, though I would be happy at the end to answer any specific questions you may have. I just wanted to leave you with a few thoughts to take into consideration as you approach your revote tonight on the issue. First is that the MRC is an organization that's made up of you, its member communities, and all one hundred and eighty-seven members are nonprofit governmental entities like Bucksport, trying to do and make the best use of limited taxpayer funds. The MRC was formed in nineteen ninety-one by towns and continues today to be governed by nine volunteer, elected, current and retired municipal officials. There are town managers, transportation operators, public works directors, counselors, city counselors, and all of us are dedicated to MRC's sole purpose, which is to ensure access to long-term, affordable, environmentally sound waste disposal for its members. And MRC, I think, has been very successful in meeting that mission over the last twenty-five years. And it is true, and I don't think there's really any doubt out there, that the PERC plant has served this region exceptionally well over those twenty-five years. It's been profitable, it's well-maintained, it has a great, very strong environmental record, and its employees are second to none. But the MRC, in its role as part of that PERC partnership, has been integral to that success. In MRC's presence, its advocacy and its, the collective voice it provided for the communities it represents, is what enabled the plant's success to benefit MRC members to the extent that it has, providing low tip fees, distributing upwards of sixty million dollars in cash back to its members. The MRC did not make the decision to seek alternatives to PERC lightly. On the contrary, we spent a significant amount of time trying to figure out how PERC might continue despite the significant loss of electric revenue in twenty eighteen. However, research and detailed analysis led us to the fact that even if all one hundred and eighty-seven member communities continued to send their trash to PERC after twenty eighteen, the plant would not be able to sustain itself as proposed for anywhere less than a hundred dollars a ton. And of course, as you know, only about two dozen or so communities have signed on for the PERC alternative. The MRC has concluded that PERC's plan for operation post-twenty eighteen is unproven. It's very different from the way it operates today and that many of the financial assumptions supporting it are simply not credible. We did not spend years developing MRC's plan for twenty eighteen because it was easy or because we wanted to try something new. We did it because it was the right thing to do for our members. We're recommending this proposal because we truly believe it represents the best option for towns in this region to maintain a dependable, affordable and environmentally sound waste disposal over the long term. In closing, I, I simply urge you to consider the value that the MRC offers. Would Bucksport be better off joining over a hundred other communities- Would Bucksport be better off joining over a hundred other communities who will be working together to manage their own future? Or does it want the alternative, which would be reverting to a simple customer-vendor relationship, where municipal waste would comprise just a fraction of PERC's proposed business model? The success of MRC and its member communities has come from working collaboratively together to solve problems regionally. This approach has worked very well for years and will continue to do so after twenty eighteen. I hope Bucksport will join us. Thank you for your consideration. Be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
How can you? Go ahead.
I heard a, it might could be just a rumor, but at some point that some of your permits were pulled or not, your DEP permits were not given to you. I didn't know if that was something new that-
No, no, we have draft permits that were issued, and we're anticipating the final permits, I believe the deadline is this week, so as soon as tomorrow.
That goes to my question. How, according to the letter from the legislators, how do you folks get by the statutory law of the hierarchy of waste that they talk about, where you're not really, you're not going to reduce, you're going straight to landfill with some of your stuff? How does that, how do you guys get around that?
So we are not going straight to landfill.
Well, if you don't get the thing built, you are, correct?
Well, but our goal is to get it built and the goal is to have it-
I understand, but if you don't, it's going to landfill, correct?
And if PERC can't survive its operations, it'll go to landfill. But, so we get by that because we have a proposal that is intended to process waste to the maximum extent possible, and will result in a higher recycling rate, a higher diversion rate, and less overall to landfill.
Recycling by who? By you or by the communities?
Both. So we're hopeful that our communities will continue to recycle and continue their local recycling programs. But then for the waste that does get to the plant, there will be recovery of recyclables from that. We're looking at upwards of seventeen percent of what comes into the plant would end up getting pulled out and sold on the recyclable commodities market, which is an exciting enhancement. It's gonna increase the region's overall recycling rate. But we are very much encouraging communities to maintain the recycling programs. This is not a replacement for recycling, it's an enhancement to recycling.
But isn't your pro forma based on the same numbers from, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, but from years one through fifteen, that those numbers don't change for what it's requesting that you bring in?
For what? Waste tonnage or for-
Corey, you had cardboard plastics, those numbers don't change, go down. They're saying that you require that same amount of material to come in, so doesn't that kind of-
I'm not sure exactly what you're looking at, but I do know-
I'm looking at the pro forma.
Is it the, on the revenue side or the expenditure side?
It's just the product coming in, the number of tons that you need per year in order to meet this number, and those numbers don't change.
Ah, okay. Well, I'm thinking that that might be actually what we're going to be sending out of the plant, rather than what's coming into the plant. And basically, the tonnage that's coming into the plant, I mean, there's very well-established sort of understanding of what the solid waste streams comprised of, and that was the basis for all the models that anybody uses to develop a waste proposal. So that was what we used, and we do assume essentially that it will be there going forward. But we're using, in terms of on the revenue side of things, we're using extremely conservative revenue projections for products on the end. So the anticipated revenues from whatever recyclables are coming out from that stream are very conservative. If the market ever comes back, we will get far more than we're anticipating supporting the project with. And overall, the revenues coming from the recycling side of it are just a small fraction of the total revenues anticipated from the plant. The important thing with the MRC Fiber Right proposal is that tip fees from communities delivering trash there will cover fully, and then some, the operating and maintenance costs of the plant, which is very important, because at PERC, tip fees only cover about half of the operating expenses of that plant. So we have developed a proposal that on tip fees alone will be sustainable, and then the product, the revenues that they're able to generate from the products they develop on the back end, the recyclables and the biogas and industrial sugars or whatever products they're developing, is what provides the return to Fiber Right and the investors, and then eventually back to the communities that do join.
What is your answer to the legislative question, the questions on your permitting?
Well, if you could remind me of exactly what the questions were, we'd be happy to-
Give me one second then. Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead.
Originally, when the plan was being proposed, they talked about possibly burning the gas that was gonna be created through a generator and selling electricity. That's one of the first things I thought I saw on the project. And now they're talking about actually trying to put that into the Bangor gas system. What happens if that gas isn't pure enough to go into that?
They will only accept it if it meets their standards, and we have already worked-
What's your option for that gas if it doesn't meet those standards?
Well, the plan is to meet those standards, but there's also the option for compressed natural gas, which is a different set of standards and a different product. We do have letters of intent for all these, and we have worked with the, or I shouldn't say we, I should say Fiber Right has worked with these businesses to ensure that it understands what the standards are and what it needs to do in order to do that, and has run all that stuff through its model and understands what the requirements are. It has built that into its financial basis for the plan.
You mentioned a few minutes ago that creating some sugars or, it's almost like developing some type of product line, but you're not even sure what it is yet.
So industrial sugars is a future product, a potential future product, that is anticipated to have great potential revenue associated with it. It is not built into the financial basis of the model that underlies the, because it is not a developed market in Maine. But the interesting thing is that it's as easy as, my understanding is, essentially turning a lever and diverting a certain portion of the process to create those industrial sugars. It's not like they need to build another building or add any significant capital-intensive type of equipment in order to be able to pull industrial sugars off of the process that they have. So that would be a potential future product that they could have. One of the things that is quite appealing to us about this proposal is that it, there are a variety of products, and there is flexibility in the products that they're able to develop. They're able to flex to different market conditions, and you're no longer reliant on a single product like the PERC model, which is electricity, and you're subject to the bankeries of that market, which at this point is quite low for electricity. With Fiber Right, you have multiple products, and you can alter your streams to capture that, depending on where the revenue is.
And you indicate your business plan is based on tipping fees covering the cost of the-
Fiber Right's financial proposal is, and the MRC board was very committed to ensuring that the financial underpinnings of this facility was going to be sustainable. The Fiber Right CEO actually initially, early on, tried to get us to go to a lower tip fee. He wanted to work at fifty-eight dollar a ton. You know, we didn't really want to do that. We got stuck once with PERC when they came out and they opened and they said we can do it for ten dollars a ton, and that proved not to be true. We did not want to get into that same situation again. We wanted to ensure that we had tip fees that solidly covered the O and N for that plant.
So the speculative nature of the plan is really what the investors, the return to investors?
Exactly.
And I understand that the financing hasn't been established yet.
We are very close, but it's kind of a chicken and an egg thing, and I know that was one of the concerns from the young-
That's my question, yeah.
Yeah. So as you can imagine, I don't know if any of you are business people, but it's very difficult to secure financing when you're trying to ensure that you have the commitments that will back the financing. Nobody wants to sign and write the sixty-million-dollar check until they're assured they have, you know, the tonnage that will make the plant viable and profitable. So, you know, and the permits, and, you know, so there's a series of things that they're looking for before they sign on the line, which essentially is the point where the check becomes, the funds become available. So we're very close to it. All of the background work has been done. They have, Covanta is one of the interested parties who has signed a letter and stated its interest. In my understanding, there's three or four other companies that are also vying to participate in this. So there's interest and demand out there, and we have, Fiber Right has done the work to be able to have everybody queued up, so we're looking at financial close, hopefully within the next few months. So that's the plan, because by then we'll have, well, we essentially have the tonnage commitments now, but we're, we need the permit finalized from the Town of Hampton, the DEP permits finalized, and a few other things that they're looking for.
Is Hampton, is it this week, Hamden's?
They, they're gonna be Tuesday the nineteenth. I think it was supposed to be this week, and somebody was out of town, so they-
You talked about the tipping fees would basically cover the operation of the plant. Does that also include, I understand that there's a lot of fresh water used in this process, and there's also a lot of waste that has to go to a waste treatment facility. And I believe Hamden uses Bangor as a waste treatment facility. And they also get, they also get water from Bangor?
Yes.
And that's all included in this tipping fee?
Yes.
Okay. Because I heard that the amount of water had almost quadrupled from the original proposal on how much water they were gonna have to use for this process.
We did, our MRC's technical consultant in early June did another extremely detailed analysis of the project's financials at that time to account for any of those changes that may have happened since the original proposal. That was also the analysis that he did, that used the very conservative revenue estimates, you know, bottom-of-the-market recyclable commodities, even less than the current bottom-of-the-market natural gas prices and those sorts of things. And that analysis that the technical consultant did also looked at a smaller-sized plant, because now it was becoming clear at that point in May and June that the hundred-and-fifty-thousand and original goal for a hundred-and-fifty-thousand tons was likely not to be achievable, at least within the timeframe we needed to be able to get the financing and start the project this fall and have it built and operational April first, twenty eighteen. And the interesting thing was, was that he did an analysis at a hundred-and-ten-thousand tons, plant size, and it was profitable. And even more surprising to me was the fact that it even anticipates, even at that less tonnage, a rebate back to communities that had signed by the deadline. So I was surprised at that. I thought, you know, in the smaller tons, the conservative revenue estimates, there would be no revenue sharing, no rebates, but even then it was showing profitability.
Are you also gonna be using commercial haulers as part of your model?
So there will be, we anticipate some commercial tons in there, very modest amount.
Because to me, I would think that the commercial people would be the people that would handle schools, restaurants, hospitals, and stuff like that, where there would be a lot more biologically degradable products in the trash as opposed to municipal trash. So that's what you're really looking for, is the stuff that can be broken down and be made into a gas, right?
Like the municipal solid waste?
Right.
Yeah, it's, we have a really good sense of what the waste makeup is in this region from all the years of data that we have. So we are not at all concerned about what the waste composition is that's been analyzed greatly, and they've run sensitivity models on it to ensure, well, what would happen if we ended up getting more of this and less of this, or more of that and less of this. And we have a high level of confidence that the process and the products will be what we're anticipating within reasonable scale to ensure the profitability, so.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, and I see Greg in the background. So Greg, Karen, whoever, okay. But last time council meeting, I explained to the folks in the audience and those that listen to us at home that I'm part of the municipal solid waste committee with our partner from Orland. And I'm new to the council this year, came on in January, but knowing this was coming up, I began reading every quote possible in the multiple newspapers that carried it from Greg and you and others. And I'm the guy that wrote that document that you were kind enough to go through and make comments to and so forth. So one of the things, I'd like to just carry on with a couple of things, and one has to do with this funding. And I read in Biofuel's Digest that there was a major equity stake, and what it referred back to was the Fiber Right CEO in December of last year came along and said that he had negotiated a fifteen-year deal with Covanta Energy Corp., which would construct and operate the plant. That's not my words, those were his words that came along. So now we come along, and I've looked every place, done a lot of research, I've got time to do it, and the only thing I come up with is basically a third party has come along, and there hasn't been any other mention except to say that the only public record is a letter of interest filed with the Department of Environmental Protection. So I'm curious about Covanta. Are they an equity partner? How much skin do they have in the game for any better way? Will they be the operations partner? Could one of you comment on that?
So the plan is, and I believe, I haven't seen it myself, but I believe there's a signed letter of commitment for Covanta to operate the plant. I was never aware that they were gonna construct it. We'll have likely a local construction firm working on that. They may be involved in the oversight of the construction of the plant, but there's a plan for them to operate the plant. They are not currently an equity partner because nobody has actually signed on the line. We haven't achieved, Fiber Right has not achieved financial close. My understanding is that they want to be an equity partner, but there are other firms, organizations out there that are also interested, and that Covanta may be willing to step back a little bit and let some of these other folks participate with the idea that they'll still be able to operate the plant. That's my understanding. And I will say that while really much of this has not really been made public, our technical consultant has signed the confidentiality agreements and non-disclosure agreements, and has been allowed in to see this information in its actual form, and has actually talked to these companies to ensure that they, the level of commitment or intent is commensurate with what we've been hearing from Fiber Right. So we have verified that independently, we're not just relying on Fiber Right to tell us what is out. So we have been to their offices and met with their VPs. I shouldn't say we, the technical consultant for MRC has done that.
The pro forma that comes along wasn't dated till June, and that was, I attended both meetings, as did other council members and the selectmen from Orland. When we had the community center, both parties on two different occasions were given the opportunity to speak, and that's where the majority of the data came from. I took what Greg said, and I took what PERC said, and that's how I compiled things, and the amount of usage and things like that. And that's really where this next question comes from. Our town manager asked repeatedly for a pro forma, and it wasn't till after the tonnage was, looked like it was gonna come in at a hundred and ten, that suddenly the doctor, the document shows up from the consultant and puts together the spreadsheets and all that. That's okay. And she has a chance to look at it. So now the question becomes, if we're going from a hundred-and-fifty tons down to a hundred and ten tons, does that have any impact on the amount of land, the size of the building, the size of the internal guts that are going in the building? If you built for a hundred and ten tons now, what happens if you expand? You know, you've got this digester coming in. I've seen how it works. To me, it looks like a retort. You throw everything into it, you heat it up, you add a little pressure, it cooks in there, outcomes all the goodies that you separate. So I know that the MRC is putting up five million dollars for the land, and I thought I read in the appendix that another seven million dollars towards the process, because I remember when Greg made his presentation, he said that if anything goes wrong and they go bankrupt, what's gonna happen is Fiber Right's gonna take everything out of the building, and we're gonna be left with the land and an empty building. So that was my understanding of-
Yep, so I'll address a couple of those points.
-MRC's stake in them.
Mm-hmm. So it is true that the MRC is committed to up to five million dollars investment, and that would be the purchase of the land, but really the dollars are more for the infrastructure. It's the road into the site and water and sewer utilities.
And then they lease back from MRC?
Oh, the land, yes. So we beat the landlord, and that is the way that we're able to control and have a say in whether or not we feel like they're operating properly within the terms of the agreement, and if for some reason something goes sideways and we decide that they're not meeting our needs, that we can get them out. And that gets to the second part, the seven million dollars you referred to is not an equity stake. Our proposal is to hold those funds aside out of the Equity Charter Members Reserve Funds, because should we have a need to want them to leave, we would be required to purchase that building back. And the starting cost would be seven million, but that will decline each year, depreciate each year. And the goal is to return those funds back to Equity Charter Members. Obviously, we don't want to be owning a building, we certainly don't want to own an empty building. It's simply there as an insurance policy so that we don't have to go back to communities and ask anybody to write a check if things don't work out the way we anticipated. You had talked about the- You had talked about the, oh, the pro forma and the building size and the different size plant. We are not anticipating a smaller lot size. We have a larger lot size than we need as it is, we want the buffer. But in terms of the building footprint and those other specifics, I can't really speak to that exactly, but I will tell you that a smaller plant size requires significantly less capital investment. And actually, the analysis that our technical consultant did showed that the smaller plant site is actually slightly more profitable than the larger plant, largely because of the lesser capital needs and much less design A and E that's needed because a bunch of the equipment that exists down in Lawrenceville, Virginia will be moved up here and won't require all the construction elements that a larger plant would.
And one last question, and this is right up your alley with your finance background. The charter reserves, I read on two separate documents that it was $400-plus thousand for Bucksport and $80,000-plus dollars for Orland. And you wrote back that, no, that's not true. It's really $36,000 for Bucksport and $53,000 for Orland. How did you, could you just...
Sure. And those, I just want to clarify that those are estimates because we're talking about future money that might be available in 2018 when the contracts expire. But the larger figure...
Again, I'll say that I saw it right down to the last dollar, two separate, but anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, the larger dollar amount that you're referring to is the combination of the Equity Charter Members' cash value plus the asset value of the PERC facility. Your prorata share of the asset, supposed asset value of the PERC facility. So, up until the last year's audit, our auditor had been including some, you know, estimated amount of what you might be able to sell the PERC facility for, which was about $10 million. And that was divided up prorata amongst the communities and then reported together with the cash asset of the reserves as the amount for each community. So, that's where that slight, you know, those figures do exist out there. But what everybody is always talking about and cares about is the cash money that will be, that is in your name. And that, the cash funds in 2018 were estimated to be about the $430,000 for you and about $52,000 for Orland. And then the rest is asset value in the PERC facility, which in December 2018, when the partnership ends, in theory, there will be, need to be some winding up to figure out how that partnership will be handled. And if there is any residual asset value, that asset value will go back to Equity Charter Members' prorata.
Peter, you had some...
No, I'll say it.
Also, any other questions?
How many communities have signed up with MERC?
The MRC? 104 communities.
Why was Hamden selected as the site? I mean, Hamden, property in Hamden's pretty expensive.
Well, I have to say, it's a very, very ideal parcel of land. Just between you and me, I tried to get them to put it in Brewer because I was so excited about the project. But our property was not nearly as desirable as the one in Hamden. It's adjacent to I-95, it has excellent access. It's relatively distant from residential properties. It's in a parcel of land that the community is interested in developing. It's consistent with their comprehensive plan. So, we looked at 15, over a dozen sites of potential locations for this, actually including the Bursso Mill Site. I don't know if you're aware of that, that might have been different cadre of folks. But we looked at the Juniper Ridge Site, we looked at places up in the northern parts of the service territory. But, you know, we're always cognizant of what the, where the most mass of tonnage is coming from. And of course, the centroid is right around Bangor because, you know, Bangor generates quite a large tonnage amount. So, we were cognizant of wanting to minimize transportation costs for, you know, the most of the tons. So, the Hamden site had numerous things that's adjacent to the Bangor gas pipeline, which made that very appealing. So, they had a number of values, and it was clearly, there was really no competition when we ranked all the choices of potential places. We even included the PERC facility location and the Holterchem Site as considerations for where to locate the facility.
Counsel, any other questions?
I just had kind of one, I gotta kind of talk to three of you, Susan, Israel. But I know we had talked about maybe having Cassella, or somebody do a zero sort from our plant instead of doing our recycling. And I just didn't know if that would be a hindrance to you guys as well if you're not accepting commercial waste from, or is that...
No, actually, another, I think, an advantage of the Fiberite facility is that it will accept zero sort recyclables. So, right now, the only, the closest facility that accepts and processes zero sort recyclables, or I should say, single-stream recyclables, is Lewiston. And then the EcoMaine facility can also handle them. So, it's quite a distance from here. So, the Fiberite facility will be able to accept single-stream recyclables, zero sort, or anybody else, others' brand of it.
But you'd have to get that commercial company, or does that, would it just come from Bucksport itself?
You could arrange it however you wanted to, and it would actually be a separate individual contract directly with Fiberite to accept those. But we have in the contract language limits on the amount that they can charge. Right now, because recyclable commodities have so little value, they're actually having to charge a tip fee now to accept your recyclables. Whereas before, they would almost, not quite almost, pay you to take your recyclables, but...
You had the five minutes to speak, and we've been asking your questions for... We've been asking your questions for half an hour. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of MRC?
I think we're all set, unless there's somebody from the public?
Oh, you've got something really quick.
No, no.
Okay.
104 or 114?
104 communities?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody from Perk would like to speak?
Now, Bob, I think there's, what, 40 communities that are seeking other plans altogether, shipping trash to Canada and...
There was, I think, 41,000, was that the number? 41,000 tons that was coming out of the equation that was going to Canada or some other place other than the MRC or PERC that had been identified? Is that, I think that, and that's location, 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 yeah.
Introduce yourself, please.
I'm Henry Lang, I'm the plant manager for the PERC plant. And we really would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. We will keep it very short.
Matt Albert, named superintendent at the plant.
So, the PERC plant has been in operation for about 28 years. The plant is very well-maintained. The plant has been looked at by an engineering firm that has indicated that that is the case, that it's well-maintained, that it can operate for another 20 years. We have a plan going forward for post-2018 operation that we believe would be profitable. There's opinions on both sides of that, but as operators, we certainly feel it would be profitable. The tipping fee is slightly higher, but it's a realistic tipping fee for us. And we certainly have operated in an environmentally sound way for all of those 28 years. Currently, we just had a, I know I've mentioned this before, we just received an EPA award for going to zero discharge on our wastewater systems. So, we do not discharge water to the Mount Scott River as wastewater anymore. We have generated an enormous amount of electricity and taken care of an enormous amount of waste over the years. We have pushed the plant to run as close to maximum capacity as possible with the idea of energy would generate as much revenue that comes back to the towns and to the owners, or partnership, I should say. Of every excess revenue dollar made at the plant, 42 cents goes back to the towns. That has resulted in a large amount of funding that the towns hold in reserve through the MRC. That money is your money. We certainly are not asking for subsidies. We're not asking you to turn your money over to any of us. We will continue to operate the plant post-2018 on waste streams that we have signed up and are hoping to sign up more of.
Well, I'd just like to ask you to consider risk. We've been doing the work for the last 28 years. We've got sound technology going forward. I'm sure electricity's not going to go out of style anytime soon. We've got the expertise, we've got the plant that's going to be paid for very soon, within, what, Hank, a year, within a year, just a few months.
That service will be done before 2018.
We're not, we're not looking for you all to, you know, invest out of your coffers to... I mean, you are entitled to equity in the plant. And there'll be more details coming out on that. But we just want to thank you for your business, and we're looking to continue with that. We really do feel we get the best technology available in terms of carbon footprint, in terms of efficiency. I mean, we got a short story. I mean, it's not really very exciting, but it's proven, it works. We've got a, we've got a good, solid business plan going forward, and we're continuing to work on that now. We've got a few very good, exciting things coming down the pipeline to extend the life of the plant and to also move past 2018. So, the PERC plant is, the PERC plant is going to be there. It's your, it's your choice what you all want to do tonight. But like I said, if you just consider the risk, you know, we're not looking for new markets to sell our products. It is what it is. And given the state of the electrical infrastructure and the, you know, the coal going out of favor, the intermittent renewables, we really do feel that the PERC plant is going to be an important part of the main electrical supply. And it's a very important project to keep going on in the future. So, we are looking for your support, we appreciate your support. And again, we think we're the lowest-risk option.
We're also representing 77 high-paying jobs from people who've been at the plant for a long time. I know I've been there for, since before the plant opened. Many of our employees have been there 20-plus years. So, we're not new to this in any way. Our operating theory going forward is that we will operate the boilers at full load during the high-priced hours. At night, we'll secure one boiler. We'll keep the other boiler going at a point where we can generate enough electricity to meet our in-house loads, and the next morning, we'll come back up. And that in-house load will be our processing of our fuel for the next day. And we're pretty confident that that will work.
We've had, we've got Riley units, Riley's been up, verified that we can do what we're going to do. This is not the only waste energy plant that performs like a peaker peak plant. It's not an unusual way to operate. I think what is unusual is we haven't operated that way because we've been trying to maximize the PERC agreement going as hard as we can 24 hours a day. So, now we've got to look at maximizing our revenues on electric during peak demand times. But we're very confident our equipment can sustain that. We know we can turn the boilers down, and I know Mr. Mayor and Mr. Stewart certainly are very familiar with that. You know, to stay within our environmental thresholds, we've done it. We've done some trials, we've got some tuning we've got to do, but this is all very doable, it's not technically risky, and we're very confident that we can operate this way.
And finally, we would like to thank the MRC for acknowledging that the plant has run very well over the years, that the operators are very skilled and have been there for a long time. And we appreciate it, we've worked very well with them for a long time. And we do have good things to say about them, too.
Question, in 2018, does the 43 cents out of every dollar profit go away so that the communities that are basically bringing municipal waste to your facility, we don't participate in that 43 cent of the profit anymore? Because it'll be a different contract?
The way that it's split up now, the excess monies, what's left over after the operating costs, is split up between AmeriMaine, the tipping fee stabilization fund, I think is the term that's used, and then the partnership. And the municipalities that are Equity Charter Members have 23% of interest in the plant. So, post-2018, that doesn't get split up the same way. It all comes to the partnership. So, the plant, the communities or entities that hold ownership in that plant end up getting it. So, it's a different split from a, something that's split three ways, and then a second split out of the third from the partnership. So, now it would just come down to the partnership, with 23% that's currently split out to everybody in that partnership.
So, you're saying there's going to be some cash return to communities who participate in PERC post-2018?
If you're a part of the partnership, I believe you would get whatever, you know, a portion of the dispersals. Is that correct?
You do own equity in the plant, so why would you...
I'm not talking the equity, ownership. I'm talking about the cash rebates that the town currently gets back to a certain tipping fee from, through the partnership. There's never been a discussion about cash coming back to the towns from PERC as part of this.
If you're a part ownership in a venture, don't you expect money back from profits? I mean...
Doesn't that expire in 2018?
The PERC partnership expires in 2018, there is no partnership as of 2018.
If you own part of a something, why would you, why would it go away? Why would your ownership disappear?
I'm Bob Newsom, I'm one of the owners. All right, and these guys have done a great job explaining it. If I can, what you're saying, Karen, is there's no partnership, that's not necessarily true. The determination of how the wind-up of affairs is conducted is still a moving target based upon some decisions that have to be made in the near term by the MRC. But the asset itself will be paid for, its operation will be fully functional, and it has contracts both for incoming waste and it will have contracts for the electricity on the outgoing basis. It is a going enterprise, consequently. The assets can be moved to a different partnership name if you want to do that. But the idea right now, as we have out there, is a draft contract, which is a sixth amended and restated agreement, which would then extend on into 2018. If we cannot do that, because it, there is a provision not to allow us to do that, that the MRC may exercise, we would then just move the assets into a new partnership and move it forward. What Hank is saying is absolutely correct. The business plan is anticipated to be profitable. Based upon the profitability of that, then the distributions would be on a prorata basis based upon ownership. And that, as it would be in any partnership, it becomes a standard partnership at that point in time. So, yes, there would be return on their investment in the plant through their ownership. So, that is true, and that is not different than any other partnership that you could then enter into if you were a limited partner, limited partners and general partners. So, that's all the case. Now, the question you're after is that with the expiration of the PERC contract, which is the above-market contract that we have with AmeriMaine right now, actually started out with Bangor Hydro, that contract goes away. But we are not counting on that contract, we did not use that contract, nor the rates in that contract, to build our model, which you have seen. That's based upon market value of the electricity being sold. We built the model based upon the cost to operate, based upon 210,000-ton throughput, as well as the energy being sold on the outside, and that's on a competitive rate through power marketers and that would buy our power. We, like anybody else that is considered a merchant plant, we would sell to a broker who would then sell into the marketplace. I cannot sell at retail, I can only sell at wholesale. So, I have to sell to somebody else that would then sell into the retail marketplace. That's just the way the federal government set it up for a merchant facility such as ours, nonutility. So, from that standpoint, our business model is built on cost and real market values, not hypothetical, not anticipated. I don't have to look in the Wall Street Journal in the morning to find out what plant's because worth the note I'm going to be profitable. I will have, the electric market is a contractual market. We will sell our product forward for three to five years. So, we know exactly what we're going to get. We will know what our ancillary services are going to be, which is another product we sell into the electric utility industry. And those are on a three-year forward basis as well. So, we will know exactly what we're going to be doing on a three-year-ahead basis. No guesswork in this. No guesswork in this. If, like I said, it's contractual basis. So, we're operating like a very small utility where we look at our fuel coming in, we look at our electricity going out, we look at our costs in the middle, and we develop a profitable business model from that. And I would tell you that we, the, the people that have invested in this project, along with the communities, have not designed a business model to go broke. It's our money. It's my money. I have no intention of losing money and going broke in, in an effort to sustain it. It is a business model that is sustainable and sustainable in every sense of the word.
At the end of the day, the 104 communities, and not all of them were with the MRC before, but the communities that were with PERC, that if there are 23 communities at the end of the day that are part of the, are PERC moving forward...
We already have 30, so...
Well, the last time they were here, it was 22. So if there were 30 communities, were all of those charter members prior to, do all of them have an equity owner interest in this at this time?
Yeah.
So that, whatever the number is of communities that are left as part of that equity, won't that equity settlement be something that's negotiated at the end of the current partnership in terms of that? Because those, however many communities that are currently part of MRC and leaving, I guess I'm trying to figure what percentage Bucksport would end up being as an equity owner in it if the whole partnership changes.
No different than what you have now. What happens here, here is that, that when, when the, let's just take the situation that you extend through the sixth amended and restated agreement, just assume that it goes forward and so everybody's ownership just goes forward to the sixth one. All right. At that point in time, you're going to have communities that are bringing their trash to PERC that are also equity owners. You may have communities that are not bringing their trash to PERC that are still equity owners. And the project will continue to move forward. Think of it in terms of having stock, all right? And, and from that standpoint, that, whatever that stock is going to generate in the way of revenue is yours because you've invested in that company. You have invested in PERC over the years and the communities as a group, all those have 23%. It's all broken down in, in the annual report. That ownership percent of PERC doesn't change. PERC is, is still the box and you still own the, the appropriate percent of that. At the end of the day, if there is $1 made, that dollar will be broken down and distributed according to that ownership structure. That's the only way money in a partnership gets sent out, is that it goes to everybody that has ownership in it. So we can't take money out unless everybody takes money out.
So if Bucksport went with the MRC, we would retain our ownership interest in PERC under that model, even though it was...
You could retain it. You could, under the, under the sixth amended and restated, you could sell it. You could sell it back to the plant. Plant will buy it. Or you could sell it to someone else. Sears Point would like to buy one. You want to talk to them, you could cooperate yourself. So all those kind of things are possible.
Could we not continue to own it and share in the profits?
You, you could continue...
I, I mean that if this is, if there's a distribution model here, you could...
If you wanted to sell it, if you wanted to get rid of your ownership share, you could sell it for, for whatever it is they're going with at the time and to an interested party.
But if I didn't want to sell it, if I wanted to hold it, I, I could hold it and I would get distribution on that from PERC even though I was with the MRC?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That was the, so the equity issue is a moot issue, whether you're with PERC or with the MRC, the communities will not lose their equity interests?
No. It's yours. Nobody can take it, just like if you own stock, nobody can take it away from you.
Okay. Well, that, that clarifies it. Thank you.
My question, I guess, is, it, it, it's been suggested you can't be profitable unless a hundred a ton, $100 a ton. Can you explain, and I think you did in a sense, but how can we be convinced 104 communities to sign up, but evidently they're not convinced? Could you help us understand how that, you're profitable?
Well, I think the, the $100 a ton, $110 a ton, there was a lot of things. Back in 2011, there, there was a group put together within both the, the partnership as a whole, those representing the communities and of course those representing the four profit partners, looking for solutions, all right, at that point in time to how the project could move forward. Back then, trying to figure out, you know, what is our world going to look like in 2018? So you're talking, you know, 70, 80 years out in the future, trying to figure out what's going to look like. And there were certain assumptions made on what the total amount of tonnage would be within the area. There was a question on what people would be willing to pay to dispose of their trash at that time. There was questions concerning how much would really be available from the municipalities because post-2018, certain things change based upon waste under the community's control between residential and commercial, which was a situation decided by the US federal government and validated by the, well, actually by the Supreme Court and then validated by the Maine Supreme Court. So from that standpoint, there was a lot of unknowns and there's a lot of guesswork, but we put together a series of models based upon a set of assumptions. And based upon those assumptions at the time, we said that if, if there was no ability to, to adjust, move, consider other options, look at other waste, add, add waste from, from the commercial side that we hadn't pursued in the past, that if you just locked this into this little box, the project wouldn't be profitable. And, and so we then even looked at different tonnages and tried to figure out what we needed. What we did at that time though is that we determined that there was a sweet spot in the operation, which was about 200 to 210,000 tons. And the way we determined that was, as these gentlemen explained, what we're looking at doing is changing to, from a base load facility, which is running all the time, we look now at being an intermediate load facility whereby we would then, we would, all we needed was enough fuel so that we could serve all the peak hours of the day, keep it on at night, do our work at night, process at night, and then stabilize the facility at night and keep moving it. And that way, we said, okay, if we only need 210, that changes all of our expenses. And so we then looked at adjusting all of those expenses so that we could then say, all right, what would be our tipping fee? And we did that. And we also looked at another thing that happened in 2018, is that we get back ancillary services that we have never been able to sell in the past. They've always been held by the utility. And those ancillary services are actually worth millions of dollars to us that we've never had the opportunity to sell in the past. That goes into the model as well, which actually is not reflected in the model you have there. So that's part of our cushion, our reserves so to speak, so that we're not, we didn't design this thing right down to the penny so that we, if we failed to get a penny, we're broke. We, we have a cushion and it's several million dollars that's stuck in there on the ancillary services. So again, when we built this thing, we said, we're going to build this whole different business plan. We're not going to be looking at running 365 days a year, 24 hours a day at full of 310,000 tons, putting out all the electricity we can, maximizing revenue back to the communities. We're going to now put together a real P and L plan. And, and because with that high market for the electricity, it covered a lot of operating sins.
Your operating cost is going to be much lower than...
Absolutely. We're, we're looking at, and this is the painful part of ownership. We're looking at 77 employees and we were looking at 57 to 59 employees, for people that have been around us for 28 years. That's hard. That's very hard. We have a commitment to our employees that we're going to work with them and we're looking at adding services at our own facility so we can reassign people in different things and also find new assignments for people, whether that be inside or outside the company. No one's going to get left behind in this. They've been here a long time. They are family. We treat them that way. We're the new kids. We've only been here since '04. But we have no right to, to, to just indiscriminately change them. But we are going to make this facility profitable because for the remaining employees, this is their livelihood. And we'll get it done.
I've got a question. How, how much of an impact are the windmills going to be on your profit?
Only when the wind blows.
I understand that part.
I don't mean to be flippant.
But they're going up everywhere and they're, they're a heck of a lot cheaper to make power than you are.
And I, I built, when I was on the utility side, I, I built gas turbines around the country and they were built megawatt for megawatt to support the windmills. Because if you look at a windmill, it's about a 7% conversion and they run about 35% of the time. So for every megawatt of wind you put up there, you got to put up a, a megawatt of fossil. We are considered a fossil unit because we can run on, on fuel that is not dependent upon the weather or mother nature. So we then become part of that pack stop. We are considered an intermediate load facility. And, and those are really only, they, they operate basically on, on an ad hoc basis. Whenever they're available, they're available. They're not the one. It's just like solar doesn't work at night. So what do you need at night in the middle, the winter to keep things warm? We have fossil fuels.
One of the concerns is, where do you take your ash now?
It goes to Jennifer Ridge. That's where the contract with Casella, and that was part of the original.
And is that going to go forward after 2018?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What happens if Jennifer Ridge gets filled out? I don't know how many more years that's got.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I can tell you it's got another 64 years of life if it was maximized to its potential.
It's without a, it's, but it's not been expanded at this point.
It's not, but it's certainly capable. And I do know the people that permitted it because I was working for the same company at the time. The landfill is huge.
There is, there's also, Casella is on file. They have their first hearing in October. That's all being put together now to, to extend the, the license as well as the use of that facility on a new cell. So that's, that's current, that is a 10-year process that is coming to conclusion.
Okay. Now, now, I don't know the exact term, but let's just call it shrinkage, okay? The stuff that's brought in, how much is actually burned and creates energy, electricity, and how much...
Waste reduction by volume.
Okay. And, and the word...
You've been reading.
Shrinkage, you're pretty good. But anyway, what, what I've read is that you people have never actually fulfilled your expectations for reduction, total reduction. Is that true or is that just something...
No, that's not true. Basically, what you're looking at is that, that there, there's waste that comes into the facility contains non-processables, the stuff that really shouldn't come to us.
Yes.
But we don't reject it and we don't send it back to you to put it on the lawn. We deal with it and we send it over to Jennifer Ridge as a non-processable, which another term is now combustible, all right? So, bowling balls don't combust. Propane tanks do blow up, but we don't like this. And, and so those, those come out as non-processables, get sent off to the side and then those go to Jennifer Ridge under contract. All right. Now, what is left, combustible fraction of the waste stream? That which enters the system, goes through, gets processed, goes into the boiler, gets burned, is reduced by 90% by volume, 75% by weight. And those are national numbers across 85 waste energy plants that exist in the United States. And that's kind of an average. Some may do better, but you know, it's really from an incineration standpoint, from the chemistry of it, that's what you get, is that kind of a reduction. And, and that's just, you do the math and it's what comes out. Yes, sir.
How many, how many tons do you have right now?
How many tons?
You're saying you need 210...
210, we have need between 210, 210,000 tons.
To be, to meet your, to be profitable.
Yeah. When we first started, we put out, we were looking for about 140,000 tons from the commercial side and then we were looking roughly at 60,000 tons to 90,000 tons from the municipal side. When we put this business plan together, we put it together with five companies with the intention of supporting the hierarchy. The intent here is for the municipals actually to reduce their tonnage coming to us. We will then make it up from the commercial side, which is far larger than is the municipal side, all right? And so what we have done is that we went out, we were originally built in support of the municipals with municipal money, municipal financing and their commitment, therefore our first commitment is to bring in all the municipals that wish to join us so that we can take care of not only their trash in the winter, but also in the summer when it tends to double because of the influx of tourists. So we have the capacity to do that. So we were looking at that, that range of tonnage, somewhere between the, the 60 and 90,000 ton range. The commercial side is then going to make up the, the difference and also we have a contract with Casella that says that they will, think of it as, as a, like a borrow pit, you know, we can take trash out of it and turn it on, turn it off to balance out the, the waste coming in so that we levelize our electrical production, so that we remain steady state. So we put all these contracts in place. The municipal side is actually the smallest side now. The commercial is going to really deal, go for the basis, the, the backbone of our, of our economic engine. And what we have done in addition to working with the municipal such as yourself, we have now gone out and worked with all the commercial haulers in, in this area to bring in commercial waste from all the various towns, communities around the area, which is on a, what we call a subscription basis, which the, the commercial entity with university or a hospital or McDonald's, they will, they will contract with the hauler directly. And then we are contracting with those same haulers for their waste in 2018. Now, can I, all of that is, the details of all that is protected under a CA, which is, again, it's a competitive business for them and so they don't release any of their information nor can we use. What I will tell you also is that the tonnage that we, that we look for in 2018, there's one hauler told me when we were signing this contract that, and I said, well, what's your tonnage going to be in 2018? And he said, if you can tell me that, I'll hire you right now. I said, but we're telling you is that we're committing our tonnage to you and we will, we will build our business and the tonnage is going to be what the tonnage is. So what we're looking at is signing up commercial haulers based upon that historic, excuse me, looking to, to oversubscribe what we need and then we'll be able to burn that tonnage.
Andy, go ahead.
Can we just go back to the, some technical things for a minute, just out of curiosity? Whose turbine generator set do you have on the, on the boilers?
G.
Okay. And the, oh, question I have is, the, a couple of weeks ago, I said you were your own best customer. You're probably 15, 20% of your generation, you use in-house to keep the lights on at night. You're making about three to five megawatts. Point is, how much of a boiler do you need to do that? Do you keep it at 50% capacity overnight to keep the lights on and do you run your sorting equipment and all that?
It's about 45 to 50% MCR.
All right.
It's about 45 to 50% of the maximum container rating.
Okay, that's a, yeah, that's a good thing. And then finally, how much thermal testing have you done, you know, bottling up a, a boiler? I mean, have you got weeks of thermal testing or a night or two? Where are you with your thermal testing?
Over the years, we've done, we've shut boilers down and brought them back up, as anybody does. This spring, we did a, a testing program with our boiler manufacturer, Riley, to evaluate what those things would be. And we didn't do it for weeks. We, we went through one full week of testing, but their evaluation was that it would not significantly impact the boiler's lifespan.
And the reason is the, the temperature stays above the critical temperature of the steel in the boiler, so it really has no effect on the, on the heat treatment, if you will, properties, so you don't get all that creep.
We, we also did look back over the past two years and we do this one boiler operation quite often when we have to do maintenance on one and we'll operate on the other one or if it's blowing, so whatever the case may be. And over the past two years, we've, we've run on a single boiler operation over 100 times. We've done that and with no excursion on any of our CO limits or any of our, our permit limits. And so the, the controllers, the, the operators are very comfortable in bringing down the boilers and bring one down to that, that 50%, MCR level, bottling up the other one, holding it on overnight and then bringing it back up. And you want to do that to eliminate the thermal stress associated with cycling.
I have a question. It was, in sort of reading about this, bring it up, take it down, bring it up, take it down and how often this is done and how successfully, unsuccessfully it has been done. I came across a, a plant, there was, was it Massachusetts that, I can't remember the state, but the, the process went through certain parts of the equipment at a much higher rate of speed. It, what, it, they ended up shutting down. They ended up not moving forward. They ended up not moving forward. Are you familiar with-
This is, I don't know which you're talking about, but what I can tell you is that I can point to the units that are currently doing it today and quite successfully. There's three of those in the Minnesota, Wisconsin area, and there's also one in Hawaii that is operated by Covanta.
Most of the Covanta plants operate the same way that we plan to propose. And I think there's forty-eight, forty-nine Covanta waste energies in the United States.
Are they building more?
They're buying some.
Yeah, and you're never correct. I did a lot of research, huh?
We're not, we're not here to not be truthful.
No, there's, no, there's-
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Right now, your contract for the power company, they buy whatever you make. Is that kind of the way it works, right now?
Whatever we make.
Now, when the contract expires in 2018, I was under the impression that they just wanna buy during peak hours. Is that, again, that-
Let's, let's back up one step.
That's how you make money, of course, by selling your electricity, right?
First off, AmeriMaine will not buy from us.
I understand.
They can't. And so we will sell to a broker, will have then brokered into the marketplace. But he will be, we will be producing electricity during the peak hours, and so we will then capture the price, because the price paid for a kilowatt hour during peak period is universally equal. So what happens is you go into the marketplace and you capture that price, and that you will then experience that price through all those peak hours, which is why we're not operating at night, because the price drops sometimes into the negative zone. That's why we're gonna self-generate. We're gonna put as little as possible on the wire. If these guys do their job, I'm gonna put none on the wire. And, and at that point in time, what we will be doing is just self-generating to operate our own requirements, to run our process lines, and to get the fuel ready for the next day. The way, the way we're set up, we have two boilers and we have two lines to process, hundred percent lines. So we'll dump all the trash on the tipping floor during the day. And then we'll start moving that through the process lines at night into what we call the replant. We'll fill that up. And then that's where we take the fuel from to put into the boiler for the next day operation. So the plant was designed, not only from the equipment standpoint, but from the very physical layout of where the trash is placed, processed, and then inputted into the facility to do exactly what we're doing. It was, that's the way it was designed. It's just that we had enough trash, we didn't have. Now, we don't have any trash.
In the interest of fairness-
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm just saying, each group got five minutes to present their case, and each group went through a half-hour questioning. That's to the point, okay? So, just so everybody knows that they've got, had a fair shake, okay?
Thank you very much.
And I'd be remiss in my own box if I didn't say we want to do this.
Okay, we're going to go on to item C. C and D are basically votes on these two proposals. Okay, the first one being, "To approve resolve R. 2016-85 to authorize execution of municipal joiner agreement with the MRC for disposal of solid waste post 2018. How would the council like to proceed?"
At the last, at the last meeting, there was a condition put on this that, that it was, it was this motion with the condition of them receiving their-
Financing.
Their, no, their-
Permit.
DEP and-
EPA?
No, DEP and Town of Hammond permits.
Yes. So we want to-
Well, that's, Joe, I think there was, there was an add-on for that, because that was a concern.
Yes. Does the council want to put that on this resolve? Okay.
Make a motion.
Second.
If you need a motion for that?
Yeah, just make, just make a motion with the, with the adder.
Okay. I make a motion to accept the approval with the addition of the language.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolve as listed. Anything further from the public on this? Anything further from the council? All those in favor?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think this is maybe the hardest decision I've had to make in the six and a half years that I've been on the council, especially coming from a non-scientific It seems to me what it boils down to for me is that we certainly, we have, we have a very well-known quantity, quality, quantity in PERC, and with the one that we're gonna vote on now, there is a certain amount of a, I don't know if gamble is the right word to use, but for me, that concern about the, some of the not entirely knowns in regard to this resolution were covered to my satisfaction by the letter of our town manager. And I do want to compliment, I mean, I have learned a lot from Councilor Rab, as well as our mayor, who have a much different background, and I appreciate all the hard work they've put into this. So I, I, I'm certainly gonna come down, I'm certainly gonna come down, I wish I was that certain. It's a lot of money, it's a tough decision, but I think we should approve the resolution that's presently before us.
Any other comments from the council? Again, you got a comment? Okay, again, this is to approve the resolve to execute a municipal joiner agreement with MRC and Fiberite, with the conditions of getting permits-
From DEP and from Town of Hammond.
Right. Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Four to three. Okay. Going on to item D. Basically, we don't really need to go on to item D. Or do we take a vote anyway?
We should take a vote.
Okay. Make a motion to approve. I'll second it. And the motion is to approve resolve 2016-86 to contract the owners of Knopsgaard Energy Recovery Company for disposableness of solid waste post 2018. We have a motion and a second to it on the floor. Any further from the public? Any further from the council?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
To resolve 85, if you wrote on that, that automatically wipes the other one out.
Oh, we should take, it's on the agenda, so we're gonna take the vote anyway. Okay? Okay. Any further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion fails. Moving on to item E, to approve resolve R. 2016-92 to approve the five-year lease of a Case five-twenty-one wheeler loader from Bureau Guard Equipment for $1,517.87 a month. How would the council like to proceed? Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the council? From the, from the public, excuse me, it's been a long night. From the council?
I had one question. Not great at math, but I did up the math and it looked like it was eighty-three thousand to buy.
The difference is interest that accrues, because this lease is not just the thing, it's a lease purchase over time. The difference between when you do all the math out is, is the interest cost on, and there's interest costs with all of these.
I did not, I guess my question is, is in his CIP?
Yes. Oh, the, the CIP for this is a higher number than this.
As a total.
Oh, okay. I'm trying. I just, yeah.
As a total for one year.
I'm all good there. You answered my question. Thanks, Blake.
Do we have a motion? Yeah.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second, right. Okay, anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item F, to approve resolve R. 2016-93 to approve the purchase of a 2017 Freightliner ten, uh, what, ten-eight SD chassis, complete with Viking chives, dump body, and snowplow. Equipment from Freightliner of Maine, bang over a total of one-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item G, to approve resolve R. 2016-94 to approve and sign the easement deed for the Lighthouse Art Gallery Art Center.
This deed goes along with the already approved easement that you had granted for them to expand that. This is just the legal language that was developed.
May I ask, I have a question. Now, the initial that we had voted on, that plan, am I being told that changed? I missed the meeting, I think the last time it was discussed.
Changed. The walkway-
The easement. The walkway, the design, I should say.
Okay. What they did is that the, the owner of the Lighthouse Art Center has deeded to the town of Bucksport, the, the strip of land that was adjacent, that was in the, that we had an easement overall for the roadway that goes down next to it. They deeded that land to us, and the easement deed for the town then goes where their walk goes, but it reduces the paved footprint of what they're printing, and it gives us total access to that road.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item H, to approve resolve R. 2016-95 to approve the sale of a 1999 GMC 2500 pickup to Evan Brassbridge for the price of $600.52.
Motion to approve.
Second. Where'd the fifty-two cents come?
Tax haven't been taken.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item I, to approve resolve R. 2016-96 to vote for the candidates recommended by the Maine Municipal Association Nominating Committee for Vice President and Executive Committee Members for the Maine Municipal Association.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council?
What am I voting on?
The Maine Municipal Association annually elects officers. The town's a member of the municipal association and a voting member. They annual elect a vice president.
So there's only people that are repositioned?
The only, there's a nominating committee that's nominated, the ones that are on the thing before you. Yes.
Okay. What's that? Do we have a motion and a second? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item J, to approve resolve R. 2016-97 to approve sewer commitments for the April to June 2016 quarter in the amount of $211,223.97. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item K, to approve resolve R. 2016-98 to allow sewer users to utilize an outside water meter for the purpose creating a credit against water usage for the amount used outside the home or business, to be calculated only after the eighteen-hundred or the twenty-one-hundred cubic foot minimum per quarter has been reached. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? And again, have we actually set the policy for this?
We have not. This allows us to do that.
Okay, okay. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item L is to approve resolve R. 2016-99 for the signs associated with the center of the Universe Project.
Jeff Hammond is here. If you remember, we had the center of the universe, there were signs and artwork that he was done. He, the Economic Development Committee, I believe, reviewed those and made a recommendation, and he also has copies of the photos. If you didn't see them in your emails, that you got with those on them as well. And Jeff's here. Do you have questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. The EDC committee recommended approval, didn't they?
They did. They reviewed them on Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and they did unanimously approve the content of the signs.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Going on to item 10, resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. I don't believe we have anything, do we? Okay, item 11, approve a quick claim deed discharge of deeds. I don't think we have anything. Item 12, town manager's report and department head's report. I believe everybody has a copy of that.
And you also have the, with mine at the dais tonight, the code enforcement officer's monthly report, which I neglected to include in the packet, but was turned in in the time they managed. I want to mention, Channel 7 is broadcasting live from Bucksport tomorrow night, six o'clock news. There's a number of entities being interviewed, but they're broadcasting from Bucksport. Our tax bills are out, are in the mail this week. First half is due by August 31st. The transfer station is back up and running as it's supposed to, and we hopefully have taken steps to ensure that it doesn't ever close again because we haven't got the trailers gone. Rachel Allen has successfully completed her six-month employment probation as payroll HR clerk. We already talked about the construction plan. Wednesday's on Main continues to be a successful midweek entertainment break for Bucksport. And this weekend, we have the Pirate Festival at Fort Knox with pirate ship rides on Saturday and Sunday from the town dock in Bucksport. And on Sunday, the Pixie Harbor Hoopla from 11 to four at the town dock parking lot. The Bucksport Bay Festival runs from the 22nd to the 24th of July, starting next Friday. So there's lots of reasons to get out, enjoy the good weather, and our local events. We had one applicant for the position of Marina Manager. Our current managers will be meeting with that applicant to discuss position, and our Public Works Director ad is now out with applications due by July 28th.
Item 13, set public hearings and hold public hearings and approval of any licenses or permits. We do have a public hearing, it's for the, I believe it's the liquor license for Brooke Minner doing, at the LMO Theater. Declare the public hearing open. Any comments? Any comments from the council?
Have you served, have you served liquor there before?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. With none of the concerns that some of us had, as far as I know.
Any other comments? Declare the public hearing closed. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the liquor license for Brooke Minner at the LMO Theater.
Brooke Minor.
Minor or Minner?
Minor.
Minner.
Minner, I think.
Minner.
I think we went through this one before.
I'll go back.
Anyway, all those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. We need to sign this, right?
Yes.
I believe it's this one here, guys, you have to sign. Okay.
I think Paul did. We need it simultaneously.
There's no other licenses. Item 14, discussion items not on the agenda for council or the public.
Mr. Mayor?
Key, you had something, right?
Yes, I just wanted to say that there's been some discussion at Times and the newspaper and other places about how the council functions in a more specific sense, that the town manager, it's my belief that, and I've, I've been on the council under one, two, three, this is the fourth town manager, that the way it's done, it should be done, as far as I'm on the council, is the way it was done in this solid waste matter, that the town manager write out, do some investigating, present that information to the council, that will then discuss it and make a decision. There was a time when the council was accused of being little puppets, standing up with seven hands going up all the time. I don't think it's a bad thing, the questions are close. I think it's a good thing, the questions are close. That means a lot of thought went into it, and a lot of processing went into it, and I think that's exactly the way this council should operate. I'm not sure how the other councils feel, but I was very pleased with that.
Along with what you said, like even just with this solid waste one, it was hard for me, because I have family members that, that work at PERC, and like you said, I didn't know enough to-
didn't know enough to not, not put my trust in, in what the town manager suggested to us. So that's, that's why, again, those sides, like you, like Susan said, I hope both of them can, can make it. From what I've been told, we're only 1% of, of your volume as far as our community, so hopefully that, that will help me maintain here.
I do have a quick question on our resolve. We put the caveat in there that they don't get permits. They don't get permits. What do we do? Do we come back and vote again?
You have to make another decision.
And when, and, but there's no date set on those permits. We didn't put a date in on that.
Well, there is a date for their permit through the state, which is, it has to either be issued or denied, or sent back for something else by the middle of July. So that's, that date is coming right up for that decision. But if the, if the permits are not issued, then the count, this council will have another decision to make. And Perk has indicated that there's not a time limit on participation, so that if there was a, and that they were open to, um, there wasn't, there wasn't a time limit on, there was not a drop dead date on theirs as well. But the, the caveat is if the DEP for any reason denies this permit, then you have the, the ability to make a different decision. That's what the caveat was for. Or the Town of Hammond, whichever is, both are, both are two items that were, have been mentioned extensively as key to whether or not this process moves forward or doesn't move forward.
Again, we are in the discussion part of the agenda. Is there any discussion items that the public would like to bring up at this time?
Scott from Old Millville. I'd really like to express a concern that I'm having with the, the judgment on the towns' people. I, some comments were made tonight. I feel that, yeah, some people may not be educated as well as others. However, when it comes to equipment, this particular gentleman knows quite a lot. Vane compressors, a screwed compressor, who in their right mind is going to service that thing should it break down? Has that been looked into? I think we need to tread lightly in the future when we express our opinion to the, to the public. Because I believe they know a lot more than you guys think they do.
I'd like to respond to that, Mr. Mayor, if I may. I couldn't agree with you more. And if I, I didn't mean to tread heavily, but I meant, meant to be precise in what I was saying, that rather than simply disagreeing, the citizenry would be better served, I think, if they took advantage of the research that's available, come up and make their case. And believe me, there are many citizens that know a lot more about a lot of things than I do.
The council was not my problem.
Well, I see. Okay, we're going to move on here. Any other discussion items from the, from the council?
I have one. It is just a mosquito bite level thing, but on Jeff's report, once again, Route 1 business owner with unpermitted sign has submitted a permit application, but not the required fee. A call is made requesting the fee, but is not yet, I mean, this just goes on, month after month after month. I mean, is this a person that applied for some sort of a permit that the code enforcement officer and police and fire, and we go through all of this? I mean, is there some way to put heat on this? I mean, every two weeks, we get, anytime the report comes out, I mean, this is getting ridiculous. Anyway, just my two cents.
I'm flabbergasted too that this is going on and on and on for, for a minor, a minor issue, really. It's a sign that was put up without a permit. The owner was made aware of that. Three letters were sent, no response at all. I made a personal visit, and only then did I get an application, but no fee. So that was when-
And how much is the fee?
$5. The applicant has submitted the, the application. There was a license up for renewal, and I received the application that day that you were going to consider renewal. I agreed because I received the application, signed off on your approval of that license, and you approved it. I don't know what else to do. I can, I can continue writing letters, begging and pleading that he please pay his $5 fee.
Who is it?
It's the owner, operator of Ramona's.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion items?
I just didn't know if we needed to talk about anything about we had with our streets and roads, or are we, is there anything that we could ask?
When's the proper time to talk about that?
Yeah, that, that would be, just to say what's going to be on the next-
Yeah, I'll just do a quick, just recap of streets and roads and the, we, what was it? Signage was first, and Councilor Key had brought up some questions about signage, and we had a discussion about, essentially what we're going to move forward with right now is to look at the parking signs, increasing the size of the parking signs designated where parking is on Main Street. The Marina sign has been, new sign has been put in place, and then deal with issues that come up on signage, questions about where signage could be. We had a long discussion about too many signs in, in certain places, so that's where it is right now. The focus is on the parking signs going forward. The second was the discussion in Handicap Parking Place. We had, I think, an excellent briefing on, on what the issues are, some of the problems, the steps we're going to take right now. We also had a briefing on what sort of constraints we might have, not necessarily regulatory constraints, but constraints in, in space. So the offer's been out there to go and take a walk for any of the councilors, anybody else who wants to walk the streets with some of the folks, see firsthand what the issues are, and then pull a group together at some point to look at what the best possible solution is, given, given what we have in front of us. So that's kind of where we are in those two committees.
Do you know when this walk's, walk's going to be, day, night? I go on nights and two weeks, so I'd like to go on it and see what-
Pearl is supposed to get back to us here.
Yes, we will. And I thought the best thing to do would be to give you some options during the day, afternoon, evening, and evening when we could all do it, but I would be sure to get back to the town manager and make sure that she does the writing and all the points.
I mean, if it's after the first week of August, it needs to be during the day, but before that's at night's party.
I would show please to know that you would like to go on the walk.
I need to walk more.
Yes, I'd like to show you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to beat a dead horse with-
Tit for tat.
I just want to explain what I feel is my role on, you know, as a counselor regarding issues like that. I think, I think first and foremost, we have to place our trust and our, and the wisdom of the town manager and people that work for us. Not excluding, not excluding any other information, as, as Councilor Key indicated, I'm open to accepting and hearing from other points of view, which is one of the reasons why we tabled that decision, I think, appropriately. But I don't believe it's my job necessarily as a counselor to second guess the experts once we've gathered the information. I certainly ask, we need to ask questions, but I just feel that that's where my role is. And again, I'm open to hearing any information, and that'll help me ask the questions of the people that are working for the town. But, you know, that's, I guess that's just the way I feel about the role of a council or board member in any capacity.
Any other discussion items? If not, we're going to go on to item 15.
One more from Paul.
I had one thing. In reference to that, if you keep having continuous violations, but, I mean, when we go to approve their permit, we, I'd like to know those because I'd vote a different way. If you're getting, you know, if you're not getting cooperation, then, I mean, I'd vote a different way if there's violations and you're not getting cooperation.
I'm hoping the fee will be paid before the liquor license renewal comes up. That's later this year, so.
Okay. Any other public or council discussions?
Just, I just want to tell Paul one more thing. With that walk, we were talking about not, not going any more than three councilors. That way it wouldn't be a quorum as well, so then maybe more than one time.
Well, if we post when we're wa, if you know when you're walking and there's going to be more than three councilors, we can just post if there's going to be a walk.
I want a personal walk with her.
Anybody, anybody else can go that wants you. It just needs to be posted. It doesn't mean it can't happen.
I apologize. I haven't been just doing that. I, thank you.
Upcoming public hearings, designation of topics for committee assignments, and scheduling of committee meetings. I don't think we have anything, do we? If not, we're going to go to item 16, which is adjournment. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes.
Welcome back, Jay.
Yeah.